Good evening. Today is June 6th. We'll get started with the meeting of Lakewood City Council. If you could join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please find me a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, please call the floor.
Anderson.
Reson.
Bullock.
Here.
Litten.
Here.
Marks.
Here.
Madeline.
Here.
O'Leary.
Here.
O'Malley.
Here.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of Council held May 16, 2016.
Move to dispose without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item one, Committee of the Whole Report Regarding June 6, 2016 Committee Meeting.
Thank you. Committee of the Whole met immediately prior to our meeting this evening. We had a number of items on the agenda. We briefly referenced the communication from Mayor Summers regarding the Health and Wellness Foundation, specifically that it relates to the resolution that appears on our docket this evening, creating the planning task force for that body. And we will hear more about that later via the mayor's communication and that resolution. We also noted that it was possible to either move forward with that resolution this evening, given that it's conceptually been discussed by council a couple of times now, but also that if it were more comfortable for council, we could refer that to a committee for further discussion. We also discussed proposed ordinance 28-16, which is the third amended charter, and had some preliminary discussions regarding the scheduling of a Committee of the Whole meeting in which we could have the attendance of the Charter Review Commission members, Law Director, and other interested parties to move that dialogue along. We also had a presentation from the Planning Department, specifically City Planner Jason Russell, regarding proposed ordinance 30-16, proposed Resolution 8868-16, and proposed Resolution 8869-16. We had much discussion on all three, and there were several points raised. The Planning Department at this point is not asking for any council action on proposed Resolution 8868-16, but rather that we just be informed of the considerations at play there. As for proposed Resolution 8869-16, Committee of the Whole did move to recommend adoption this evening. And for proposed ordinance 30-16, it was recommended that council adopt on third reading. A number of questions were raised this evening, for which additional information or communication will be forthcoming as that process goes along. We also had an update on pending or imminent court action, and that concluded Committee of the Whole. I ask that that report be received and filed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item two, ordinance 3016, and ordinance to market for sale of real property located at 1458, 1462, 1466, 1472, 1476 Bell, and 1451, 1457, 1461, 1471 St. Charles, and 1477 St. Charles. Pursuant to Section 15507 of the Codified Ordinances, first reading and referred to the Committee of the Whole, 51616.
Move to defer.
Second.
Uh, motions that made and seconded, any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item three, Resolution 886816, a resolution declaring council's intent to vacate the portion of Cannon Alley lying south of Northwood Avenue. Refer to the Committee of the Whole, 51616.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item four, Resolution 886916, a resolution to enter into a lease agreement with Lakewood Childcare Center for the lease of the real property located at 1450 Bell Avenue Suite 100, also known as the Community Health Center. Refer to the Committee of the Whole, 51616.
Move to adopt. Uh, I'm sorry, we have a couple people who are signed up to speak on this resolution. Judy Gillespie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate you doing that. Judy Gillespie? Oh, can I turn it on? Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, doesn't sound like it. Okay. Judy Gillespie, 23003 Chandler's Lane. My question pertaining to the, uh, the lease, the three-year lease for the, uh, the women's center is... I brought my wrong papers. Darn. Wait a minute. I'm, I'm learning how to function inside your docket. And, uh, and, alright, so I have, I have the First Amendment to the lease agreement, and, um, the first page, page 14, indicates, the first paragraph, "The First Amendment to lease agreement is made and entered into by and between the City of Lakewood," in parentheses, "identified as landlord, as successor in interest to Lakewood Hospital, Original Land, Association Landlord, and Lakewood Childcare Center." So that established who the landlord and the original landlord were, and the tenant. So then, and that was page 14. Then on page 17, the heading of this page says Lakewood Community Health Center Lease Agreement. The landlord now on this page is Lakewood Hospital Association. And the tenant is still the Lakewood Childcare. That, that doesn't change. Then on this page, where people actually sign the names, the City of Lakewood is identified as a landlord. Now, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm only a person that can pick up the difference between three different pages, but that doesn't seem to make sense if you've posted these on the docket to say, the first page, page 14, defining the lease agreement. So, I mean, either somebody's sleeping on a switch, or we got three different names going here. So, um, I, I know this is not question and answer, but is there any response?
Law Director Butler, do you care to offer a response?
And, and can you keep it so that I can understand it, since I'm not a lawyer? Please, Kevin?
Thanks.
Thank you.
She'll do my best.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Lakewood is now acting as the landlord at that property, which the City of Lakewood has always owned. But as a result of the December 21, 2015 master agreement, the city once again became controlling as the landlord for that particular property. This document that council is being asked to approve tonight is an amendment to earlier lease agreements. Those earlier agreements were in place when Lakewood was not the controlling landlord at that particular property, and in fact was just the property owner. So...
But those, those years are gone.
That's correct. This is an amendment to those old lease agreements.
And why would you amend something that that year is gone, it's past?
Ma'am, thank you. That'll, that'll be enough. Uh, legal documents commonly include exhibits that pertain to previous agreements. So what you're seeing here is an agreement with exhibits that reference previous agreements. So that's...
But if those previous agreements changed, Sam, what is the sense in referring to something that's changed since December 12th of 2015? Because this page says Lakewood Hospital Association, and this one says the City of Lakewood. I'm only saying, I, I, and I guess I'm, I'm educated enough to understand that when circumstances change and ownership is come back to the city, that that, that would make Lakewood City the landlord. It's just that this page doesn't say that. This is still referencing...
That, that page is reflecting the previous arrangements.
But Kevin said it was changed. You had to go back and change those in past years, because that wasn't the case.
No. Ma'am.
Yes?
What is before us this evening is an amendment to the lease.
Which expired?
Which, the prior, the prior leases...
It's expired?
The pri, in the prior leases, the landlord was in fact Lakewood Hospital Association. Currently, for this amendment, the landlord is the City of Lakewood. And that's what's reflected in the document that you have before you. So I appreciate your concerns.
And this is the new three-year lease you're signing? The new three-year lease?
I appreciate your concerns. Thanks.
Okay.
Uh, that was our only comment on that item. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Volokh.
Just to summarize, so for the sake of the public discussion, both the council president and the law director are saying that they are confident that the drafting does not contain errors, but appropriately amends the language in various lease documents, correct?
I can hear you.
I got a confirmation just now from the council president and the law director that, uh, the documents are appropriately drafted to, uh, were, to read correctly so that the intended effect is achieved. I just made sure that we didn't have an error, and I got confirmation of the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments in council? Yes, Councilman Anderson.
I appreciate all the time and effort that this, uh, that this council's spent on deliberating over this
I can hear.
new agreement, and I appreciate the back and forth with the administration. I think we spent a lot of, a lot of time, number of hours, on this particular matter. And again, I, I appreciate the law director chiming in there just to make sure we do have the lowercase t's crossed, lowercase j's dotted appropriately. And I, I'm of the opinion we do have the appropriate documents drafted appropriately. And again, this is a culmination of a lot of conversations about this new lease agreement. So I appreciate all the effort of everyone, including the administration and members of the, of the public that made their opinions known to council during this deliberation as well. So, thank you.
Thanks. Any further comments or questions? We have a motion to adopt, and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item five, ordinance 2716, an ordinance to enter into agreement with a licensed real estate broker to market for sale of the real property located at 11900 Madison Avenue, 1468 West 117th Street, and 148284 West 117th Street, for a period of 120 days pursuant to Section 15507 of the Codified Ordinances. First reading and refer to the Committee of the Whole, 5216. Second reading and recommended for adoption, 51616.
Thank you. As was just referenced, this item is appearing for us tonight on third reading and was previously recommended for adoption on third reading, that was May 16th. I would move to adopt.
Second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item six, Finance Committee Report Regarding Ordinance 3615B, 2516, 2616.
Uh, Councilman Volokh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, on, um, the Finance Committee met on May 23rd, uh, May 23, to consider ordinance 3615B and recommended to the full council adoption tonight. In sum, that ordinance introduced, uh, excuse me, that ordinance would have meant the original contracting ordinance as part of our budget for fiscal year 2016 to add $80,000 in additional contracting authority for three purposes. Number one, for fit bits for city employee wellness; number two, for processing residential yard waste; and number three, for additional HVAC services on city property. We got a little bit of discussion and agreed that, um, the purpose and the amount was appropriate, and so recommended adoption tonight. The committee also discussed with significant public participation two ordinances to enable the, if adopted, enable the construction of a erosion-controlled revetment adjacent to the Meridian condominium. The committee did a thorough analysis and recommended to the full council adoption of those ordinances with one expected amendment in Section 7 of ordinance 2516 to fill in the amount in a blank listed as currently. And, uh, the, uh, the other thing to say is that the Public Works Committee membership was also present, so we really had a full-throated deliberation by two council committees. So with that, I move to receive and file that oral report.
Second. Uh, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to receive and file that oral report? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item seven, ordinance 3615B, an ordinance preventing ordinance 3615A adopted February 16, 2016, to enter into contracts for professional services and to advertise for bids and entering to contracts for the purchase of repair maintenance and operating supplies, services, and equipment as authorized by the 2016 appropriation ordinance with the lowest and best bidder or bidders or as otherwise provided by law. First reading and refer to the Finance Committee, 5216, second, 51616.
Move to adopt. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item eight, ordinance 2516, an ordinance determining to proceed with the improvement of the shoreline of letting the Meridian condominium, 12550 Lake Avenue, by the construction and installation of a revetment on the northernly property line by Lake Erie and including any and all occurrences there too. First reading and refer to the Finance Committee, 5216, second reading, 51616.
Thank you. Um, we do have one person signed up to speak this evening. That is Gabriella Kaplan.
My name is Gabriella Kaplan. I am owner of 12550 Lake Avenue Meridian condominium, and also 12700 Lake Avenue Wynton condominium. Mr. Mayor and Lakewood City officials, we're here because owners and officials have a common goal, to protect the shorelines and cliffs. I am representing 52 owners who have signed objections to ordinance 2516 and 2616. We plead to City Council to table these ordinances as written and instead consider the expert reports of local geotechnical engineer Dr. Lewin and Dr. Carolina University Professor Young, who concurred that a revetment project as designed is not indicated at this time, will not prevent the cliff from collapsing, and will be costly to maintain. Let's follow the experts' advice, who recommend improving its drainage and monitoring the cliff from above. Should in the years to come the cliff show signs of fragility, only then the project should be revisited by a geotechnical cliff expert. Their recommended alternatives at this point are less costly and more environmentally sound. Constituents unaware of these studies perceive stone and concrete walls as a sturdy solution. Let's not be misguided by these interest groups who ignore best practices. As that U.S. Geological Survey paper 1693 mentions, arming of the shores has created sand-starred beaches that extend kilometers down, resulting in greater water turbidity as shores are exposed to more and more erosion. These studies also show that man-made shore revetments protecting structures have been found to be part of increasing algae blooms, bacterial growth, and environmental destruction. It is because of this that about a dozen states have strict regulations of these structures and often altogether ban revetments and armored shore protections to avoid them. It is time for the higher, of the Ohio ODNR and Army Corps of Engineers to update their 1996 guidelines in order to avoid further destruction of our lakes. Our lake water and shores are one of the greatest assets we own. About 20% of the planet's fresh water is in the Great Lakes. Lake Erie fishing alone provides 1 billion annual revenues. In the Great Lakes, with increasing global warming, snow packs that feed water to our lakes are dwindling. An increased evaporation makes shores to retreat, leaving revetments high and dry, far from the waterline. Lakewood has been championed, has been known to have championed environmental causes. In that spirit, we urge our official to embrace the latest and best practices in shore erosion protection, so that all shores, downstreams, are protected too. Let's use this opportunity to work together as a community, so that Lakewood is the trendsetter in proper, in proper erosion protection for all the Great Lakes. By so doing, we can all achieve erosion protection for the great best good. By being good stewards now, we shall assure future generations the same enjoyment of our lakes and shores that are provided to us now, thanking the council and the mayor for considering this important request to cancel and revoke these ordinances. I also would like to ask the council, when are these ordinances devoted? And if so, what is the date? Thank you.
Thanks. Well, uh, to that point, I would move to defer ordinance 25-16. However, I would not be able to conjecture at this point as to when those would be voted on.
I'm sorry. I want to also officially hand to you 52 signatures.
I'm sorry. We're, we're, I'm sorry. We have a motion, actually, that's pending on the floor right at this moment. So if you could, please submit your materials to our clerk. Bring it back, and she can make sure that we get them. Thanks. So we had a motion to defer, and a second. Is there additional discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item nine, ordinance 2616, an ordinance to advertise for bid and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder in courts of the administrative code of the city for the Meridian condominium's special assessment and revetment project. Place on first reading and refer to Finance Committee, 5216, second reading, 51616.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item 10, ordinance 2816, an ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Lakewood a proposed third amended charter of the city. Place on first reading and refer to the Committee of the Whole, 51616.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item 11, ordinance 2916, an ordinance authorizing the transfer in advance of certain funds. Place on first reading and refer to the Finance Committee, 51616.
Move to defer.
Second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? I'm sorry. Yeah, move to defer. Uh, is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item 12, Health and Human Services Committee Report Regarding May 9, 2016 Committee Meeting, Lead Safety Measures in Community Health Needs Assessment.
Councilman Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dear members of council, Health and Human Service Committee meeting was held on May 9, 2016. Director Jill Semino, Chief Gilman, committee members Anderson and Litten were in attendance, along with Mary Lee from our planning department, Denise Romano and Stephanie McCarney from Kiowa County Board of Health, Allison Organic, Housing Outreach Director at Lakewood Alive, and residents of Lakewood, Doctors Kilroy and Revo, and Dean Delzal.
Honored, please.
I can hear. The dangers of high levels... Can you hear that better? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The dangers of high levels of lead in blood have been in the news related to water, and we found Lakewood to be proactive in monitoring the lead levels in our water supply and our water to be within safe levels. However, according to the latest 2014 statistics from the Kiowa County Board of Health, 7.8% of the children tested in Lakewood have increased blood levels, blood lead levels due to lead exposure, most likely to lead paints used in our older homes. Whether it's inhaled, swallowed, or more rarely, absorbed through the skin just by touching a product that contains lead, lead can act as a poison. Children ages 6 to 72 months who live in or are frequent visitors to buildings built prior to 1978 make up the highest priority group. Because the highest concentrations of lead in paint were used in the early 1900s, homes built before about 1960 are of greatest concern. Children whose homes are being renovated are also at extremely high risk, are at extremely high risk. Lakewood is considered a high-risk community due to the age of our homes. Protecting children from exposure to lead is important to lifelong good health. Even low levels of lead in blood have been shown to affect IQ, ability to pay attention, and academic achievement. And effects of lead exposure cannot be corrected. The most important steps parents, doctors, and we as a city can take is to prevent lead exposure before it occurs. A vibrant discussion was had regarding the importance of educating our community residents and landlords alike about the Lead Safe Kiowa Paint Abatement Program. About one-third of our children are tested randomly. We discussed how Lakewood might be proactive in assuring a healthy environment for all of our children through testing children five and younger, code changes to require all registered contractors to be trained in working lead-safe educational outreach and sharing information regarding financial assistance available to homeowners for lead paint remediation. We also discussed the method of obtaining a community health needs assessment other than that provided by the Cleveland Clinic. The committee agreed that if we can best obtain data on a most granular level, ideally by consensus track, trisensus track. Commissioner Terry Allen from the Kiowa County Board of Health could not attend this meeting. The committee agreed to schedule a meeting in June at a time when Commissioner Allen can be present to offer his advice on how we might move forward obtaining this data. Meeting adjourned at 7:30. Please, yeah, respectfully submit. Receive and file.
Motion to receive and file. Uh, second. Uh, motion to make to receive and file. Is there discussion on that motion and communication?
Madam, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Anderson.
Yeah, I just wanted to appreciate the, um, the effort of our council colleague to lead this discussion. I think it's a really important one, and I appreciate it. Not only what you were able to pack into this thorough communication, but also understanding that Lakewood has made some considerable progress in remediating residential-based lead pollutants over the years. And I appreciated, um, Chief Gilman being there as well and adding a couple of, of points regarding that movement forward. I think this is still a, a pretty, a pretty major issue to make sure we, we continue to keep our finger on the pulse of this. And again, I applaud the effort to bring all those folks together. I look forward to the next time we're able to sit, hopefully, with Director Allen and continue this discussion. So thank you very much for bringing this, and I hope that the community's able to, um, really, sort of, understand the hard work that, that goes into not just creating legislation ordinances, but also digging into the issues that might lead to public policy in the future. So, again, thank you very much.
Any further comment or discussion on the communication or motion to receive and file? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item 13, Communication from Councilmember O'Malley Regarding Resolution Supporting the Federal Railroad Administration's Proposed Ruling Requiring Two Cars and Crews.
Councilman O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of council, the Federal Railroad Administration is proposing...
I can hear you.
Excuse me. Can you hear me now? I think this may be one of our last meetings with this, uh, council. I hope. Federal Railroad Administration is proposing that we were requiring that trains in the United States be operated by a crew of no fewer than two people. FRA is seeking comment from individuals in local communities who might be impacted by this ruling. As, as Lakewood is a community of some 27 railroad crossings, almost all of which approximate to home businesses and walkways, I believe we should be supportive of this proposal. There was a time when those trains were operated by a minimum of five engineers and conductors. Those staffing levels have dwindled to a point where some trains are being operated by a single crew member. There are a host of problems with single-person train crews, including lack of notice for such occurrences as blocked signals and railroad crossing, mechanical failures, and many other eventualities. Single-person crews are indeed a rarity, but this ruling would bar them. Given the considerable public safety implications of this ruling, other neighboring communities are weighing in as well. The state council unanimously passed a similar resolution on May 2nd. Ask my colleagues to join me in supporting this resolution. Thank you for your consideration, and we will proceed to proceed.
Thank you. Uh, seconding the motion to receive and file. Adding my own thoughts, I, I am very supportive of this resolution and this proposed rule. As Councilman O'Malley mentioned, Lakewood is dense in many ways, and railroad crossings are no exception. In addition, we're one of the few remaining communities in which... In addition, we're one of the few remaining communities in which it is common practice, and indeed universally the practice almost, that children walk to school. And that is a major safety consideration for our community as well. As you mentioned, there are a lot of potential negatives and drawbacks to single-person crews, even going so far as to say fatigue and things like that. So this is certainly a proposed rule that makes a lot of sense to me, and I think a lot of Lakewood residents would find solace in seeing go through. So I would be supportive of this resolution, and would also ask for my colleagues' favorable consideration. We have a motion to receive and file. Is there any further comment on that communication or the motion to receive and file? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that...
Item fourteen, resolution eighty-eight seventy sixteen, a resolution supporting the Federal Railroad Administration's proposed ruling requiring two-person crews.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item fifteen, communication from Mayor Summers regarding foundation planning task force.
Mayor Summers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, members of the audience. We have had discussions over the past several months regarding the Community Wellness Foundation and its planning process. With this letter, I'm proposing a resolution to create a foundation planning task force that we have talked about. And this task force will be charged with recommending the process for the creation of a new Ohio nonprofit corporation that is formed for the purpose of addressing community health and wellness needs, and the city of Lakewood has set forth in a master agreement approved this past December. I ask that you refer this resolution to the appropriate committee for further discussion and review.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication from Mayor Summers.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? I would add at this time, I guess, that in line with Mayor Summers' request, the interest both in the community and on council on this topic, that a referral to perhaps committee of the whole, or Health and Human Services is topically appropriate, but I think, given, again, the widespread nature of the committee of the whole, might be appropriate, I would lean that way. But anyway, we have the motion to receive and file in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item sixteen, resolution eighty-eight seventy-one sixteen, a resolution establishing the foundation planning task force for the purpose of creating a new Ohio nonprofit corporation charged with addressing community health and wellness needs in the city of Lakewood.
Move to refer to committee of the whole.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion to refer eighty-eight seventy-one sixteen to committee of the whole?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Bullock.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have been looking for talent to apply and submit resumes, and I believe the deadline listed on the position was June one. I got one so far, but that's fewer than I expected, so I'm pursuing a couple additional meetings for applicants. But since it's a topic directly relevant to the legislation before us, do we, how's that looking, the crop resume so far?
I would encourage all of us to continue to look for talent, but we have probably twenty-four applicants at this point. So, but if there's someone out there that you think has not become aware of it, of this particular assignment, and you think that'd be worthwhile, we should consider accepting that application. And I think part of our discussions in committee of the whole will be a reflection on the applicant pool and the size of the task force. When we put a swap target of thirteen, there's nothing that says that's a firm number. We can accommodate that as we see fit. So I think at our discussion, we should begin to look at the talent pool, the size of it, and the type of skills that we think want to be reflected, and figure out how to make the best decision between all of us.
Thank you.
Thanks. Quick call on, I'll share with my colleagues that I had some, fairly persuasively argued to me recently, last week, at one of these discussions, that the emphasis with this founders' committee, for, to paraphrase, would be less what I was originally looking for, which was subject matter knowledge of health, wellness, prevention, health, and more, foundation governance, and battle-tested experience on how foundation funding and grant-making has evolved over the years. It's gotten very, very rigorous, and the tracking metrics for grant-making is much more disciplined in the last ten, fifteen years. And so the advice given to me, which really changed the direction I was going in, which my thinking was, you really want to get people with a lot of senior experience, and not necessarily constrain your talents to the city of Lakewood either. And so that was kind of a surprising argument to me, and I just previewed that for our discussion in committee of the whole. Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman O'Malley.
That's actually an interesting point. I believe the resolution specifically, excuse me, does the resolution specifically call for residents to be appointed to the task force? I think it does. But if we're, I think that's good then, that we're referring to this committee of the whole, because I think that Councilman Bullock raises an interesting question for us to debate, to talk about.
I agree. I appreciate that point as well. There are a number of times that that appears in the code, and I've wondered about that as well, because it comes up, obviously, in different contexts and a lot of different bodies, and I appreciate that concern. Thanks. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to refer to committee of the whole. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item seventeen, communication from Law Director Butler regarding resolution prohibiting Mayor Summers to enter an agreement with AT&amp;T for Centrex telephone service.
Water, or Water Director Butler.
Thank you, Mr., excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chair. The resolution that follows this communication, which I won't read verbatim, permits the mayor to enter in an agreement with AT&amp;T over the use of Centrex telephone lines, which are analog lines that are dwindling in number based on the fact that we are now in a voice-over IP telephone system. But nevertheless, they're still needed for certain legacy fax lines and things like that in the city. So I ask that the resolution be referred to a committee of your choosing for further deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item eighteen, resolution eighty-eight seventy-two sixteen, a resolution to enter into a three-year agreement with AT&amp;T for the sale and purchase of citywide Centrex telephone service, authorizing the expenditure of funds in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars in order to effectuate the intent of the agreement and accepting the contract from competitive bidding pursuant to LCO Section 11104A10.
As was mentioned by the Water Director, we could refer this to a committee of our Topically, I think it could go to finance, I suppose, but I know the finance is a pretty full plate right now. Is there a recommendation from the administration as to a committee that this would be most appropriate for?
It's great of me, Mr. Chair. We're scheduled to meet next Monday, and we could, in a timely fashion, add that to a list of several other items. We've got four already. I mean, this would be the fifth, so we could work through it.
Thank you. I appreciate that flexibility. I guess I would move then to prefer eighty-eight seventy-two sixteen to finance.
Second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to refer? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item nineteen, communication from Law Director Butler regarding two thousand sixteen second quarter codification ordinance.
Water Director Butler.
I will not commend this, merely commend this communication to your attention. This ordinance that follows directs our codifier, Walter Drain, to update the codified ordinances to reflect changes made through that date certain in the ordinance. So it has to either be held on the council docket for approval at some point after third reading, or sent to a committee for deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you. This holds a soft spot for me as an initial chair of the Rules and Ordinances Committee. This is some of our largest business that we attended to. But I, as has been our practice of late, I would be inclined to leave this on the docket and have council approve it over time, and after individual review, certainly, if council members are so inclined. But as Water Director Butler mentioned, this is seemingly the very definition of misterial, ministerial, rather. On that note, I would move to receive and file the communication from Water Director Butler.
Second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion to receive and file? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item twenty, ordinance thirty-one sixteen, an ordinance to approve the editing and inclusion of ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances to provide for the publication of such due matter.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to defer that ordinance? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item twenty-one, communication from Finance Director Pay regarding two thousand seventeen tax budget, two thousand seventeen tax advance resolution, two thousand seventeen tax rate resolution.
Director Pay.
Thank you. Along the lines of ministerial, the following three resolutions kick off the two thousand seventeen budget season, with the tax budget resolution, which council will submit to the county fiscal officer upon passage, along with the tax rate resolution and the tax advance resolution. Please refer to the finance committee for further discussion.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to receive and file that communication from Director Pay? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item twenty-two, resolution eighty-eight seventy-three sixteen, a resolution approving the tax budget of the city of Lakewood for the year two thousand seventeen and authorizing the filing of same to Cuyahoga County Fiscal Officer.
Finance committee's plate's about to get a little bit cooler. Move to refer resolution eighty-eight seventy-three dash sixteen to finance.
Second that referral. For referral to finance, again, for...
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item twenty-three, resolution eighty-eight seventy-four sixteen, a resolution requesting the Cuyahoga County Fiscal Officer to draw on the Cuyahoga County Treasurer to pay to the city of Lakewood Director Finance in advance of all real personal property and estate taxes and special assessments collected in the year two thousand seventeen in such amounts as may be requested and available.
Move to refer to finance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to refer to finance? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item twenty-four, resolution eighty-eight seventy-five sixteen, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county fiscal officer.
Move to refer to finance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to refer to finance? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item twenty-five, communication from Human Resources Director Husecki regarding purchase request.
Director Husecki.
Thank you. As you have in front of you, see the letter in front of you, I'm looking for permission to allow purchase outside of the eligibility process in order to take advantage of a quota discount from the Fitbit company in order to purchase Fitbits to sell at discounted rates to employees as part of their wellness program.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to receive and file? I would note, I believe that there was a request in the communication, or not in the communication, in the cover email to the communication, that we do move on this item tonight, as the pricing is time-sensitive, is my understanding.
That's correct.
Thank you. So we have a motion to receive and file with communication from Director Pay in a second. Is there any discussion on the communication?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Anderson.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this up, Director. Bless your heart. I'm looking at the, in some legislation we passed earlier, or reconsidered earlier, it said fitness, fitness equipment devices were in a total of fifteen thousand dollars. Is that what, that's the line I would pass?
From yours. Yep, and contracting for these.
So fifteen thousand, so just run us through the benefit to, to go through this method as opposed to the traditional method of that purchase. What are we looking to save? What are we looking to...
Well, this actually is not going to have any cost to the city at all that, in the long run, we will be getting an outlay of maybe two thousand dollars at the outset. Half of that will be cooped from a grant from the Methodistual, Methodistual Ohio for a wellness grant that we get every year, and then half of it will be cooped through to selling of those devices to employees.
So Director Pay, am I going to mingle in two pieces of legisla, or two communications that don't have anything to do with each other here?
They do.
Okay.
And we only have capacity to do fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay. Very good.
Because that's what was just passed by council. We had a communication to shoot.
All right, so...
Oh, right by the bottom of everybody.
So are we looking to amend this communication, this request, or what are we looking to do here to make sure that these numbers dovetail into each other?
That this request should not exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Unless contracting authorities, unless it's...
All right. Director Butler, do we need to kind of play an amendment to eighty-eight seventy-six sixteen then?
No.
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 We'll redo, sorry. I'm wanting to...
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Bullock.
If it's simply a matter of, personally, I'm happy to support wellness and the long-term investment in reducing our health insurance amounts. So if it was the intent of the administration to have one hundred and fifty and not one hundred and twenty, I'd be happy to support that. We couldn't do that by going backwards in the docket tonight, but in a future meeting, we wanted to consider that. I'd be happy to support that change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers, Anderson, Bullock, for those points. I believe we are still on the motion to receive and file the communication from the Director Husecki in a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item twenty-six, resolution eighty-eight seventy-six sixteen, a resolution authorizing the purchasing manager to purchase Fitbit devices without the necessity of bidding in accordance with Lakewood codified ordinance Section 11104A1, in accordance with the city of Lakewood standard purchase order terms and conditions.
We do have one person signed up to speak, that is Judy Gillespie.
I would like to say before I say my name that I don't want my time to start, because everything you discussed up there, I didn't get to hear back there. So I only know about one communication. Apparently, there must be two communications that you asked the law director about. So if you could lighten, you know, enlighten me about that, then I can stand here and hear what you say, because I couldn't hear you back there, even though I asked you to speak louder. So what is the issue with, with one hundred and, this, this letter says one hundred and fifty, but what was one hundred and twenty, Mr. Bullock?
If I may, I'd be happy to respond. I think Councilmember Bullock's question sort of followed up on mine. I was noticing a slight discrepancy between the ordinance that we passed earlier tonight, which gave us purchasing authority, and amended an ad line for a fifteen thousand dollar purchase authority for Fitbit. The communication just read by the director went in excess of that fifteen thousand. I was just trying to reconcile the difference, and so the thought was either to decrease the purchase, which would negatively impact the health impact of this program, or, as Councilmember Bullock was suggesting, maybe we hear from the administration at a later date to maybe add another increase to this potential outlay. If we think the program is valuable enough, will impact city health and city employee health to the degree that we don't want to decrease number of Fitbits. So I just noticed a discrepancy between what we passed earlier, what was being asked for here. So now the question is, do we decrease the program or do we increase the outlay to match what we need?
But don't, don't they give you the statistics of the, of the hundred people last year that got them and benefited from them? I mean, didn't they justify to you why it's worth doing it again? I mean, weren't you given that information? I mean, how can you say to go ahead and do it again if you don't know whether it worked or not?
I, I believe that.
Did they submit anything of results two years ago? Do you have skinnier people now? I don't know.
Do we have skinnier people?
Well, this is a wellness program. Two years ago, it was, it was you as a city approved, you know, selling the bracelets cheaper. So now, two years later, they're coming to you to ask to do it again, and I'm only asking you, how do you know if it's worth doing it again if they didn't submit results? I mean, if you had competitions and you had everything, but you see somebody's health issues going down and, and your insurance is better, I mean, was there some proof of the benefit of this? Otherwise, why do it again if it didn't work two years ago?
Personally, I did remember receiving communication from the administration, at least to me directly, about the benefits of this program. I'd be happy to hear from the mayor or other members of the.
But the decision for you tonight, since you want to put it through in a one night slam.
Excuse me, ma'am?
I'm, I'm trying to be patient with the questions. I'm trying to respect.
Good, good.
This is a resolution. It takes, basically, we can pass it on one reading, absolutely. Love to hear from the administration if it pleases.
Sure. And then my time will start? Okay. You just, I'll wait.
Mayor Summers.
Thank you, members of council, members of audit, Mrs. Gillespie. Lakewood is an organization, is self-insured for our health insurance, which means we take the full risk of paying for the medical insurance claims of our employees up to certain stop-loss issues. So we have every incentive in the world, as do most employers, to create a healthier workforce, not only for productivity reasons, but also for financial cost of health, health insurance reasons. We've embarked on a wellness program. It's a program that will take years to pay off. We have four hundred and five full-time employees. We had one hundred of them buy Fitbits, and I think it was proven to be sufficiently of interest to other employees that we'd like to expand their participation. If you're familiar with a Fitbit, you know that it's a wearable device that tracks body movement and allows any one of us to determine whether or not we're moving more or less than agreed, against agreed-upon goals or targets. And it provides almost instantaneous feedback about the amount of physical activity that we have and perhaps should have. So it's, it's a recognition, and it's been, I think, well documented by lots of folks, that that kind of feedback encourages them to do more physical activity than they were previously doing. We all know that common sense says that's just a good thing to do, especially for a large percentage of our workforce, which is very sedentary. And we have many members of our workforce that work very physically hard, but many of us, and I would be include myself here, do not work physically hard, and therefore getting physical exercise is important. So anything we can do to improve our physical health will lower the cost of healthcare and therefore lower the cost to our taxpayers. We think that's a pretty good bet, but the payoff will be years in the making. It's important that we stay on this and we intend.
So there's no results?
Thank you, Mayor. Additionally, it's worth noting as well that this is a program that is essentially not costing the city any money because it's being paid for in the form of grants and then by employees purchasing the devices. And so really, the question to me seems to be, why not do it? Councilman O'Malley, do you have a point to make?
I would just note that it seems to me that Mystical Gillespie is asking for statistical evidence that walking has a positive impact on cardiovascular health.
No, I'm asking if there made a difference here where the money's being spent.
And I, and I just articulated that there really isn't money being spent by the city because it's reimbursed costs. So thank you for your contributions today.
Can I give you my name and answer the other questions that I have?
No, I'm sorry. We've already exceeded five minutes. Please be seated. Thanks. We have resolution eighty-eight seventy-six sixteen before us tonight. I move to it out.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion to it out? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item twenty-seven, liquor permit application for new D one, D two, and D three, permit class type to Emerald Nicholas, material one-five-zero-zero, senior park drive.
We are in receivable report, I believe, on this establishment. We typically defer to the councilperson whose ward and which the establishment lies that happens to be Councilman Anderson.
Yes, word one, Metro Park. Just kidding. No reason to object. I know that the Lakewood Police Department did their traditional investigation background check on these, on this particular request, and again, no substantial reason to object to this request. So I'm certainly in favor of Metro Park's moving in this direction.
Agreed. Thanks. I also had the concern that the Metro Parks might be serving some underhaged here, but it seems to have been alleviated. So I would move that we file this application without objection.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes. That brings us to the end of our docket this evening. I would like to give councilmembers the opportunity to make some announcements, as we did have a number of community events over the weekend that are a note and have, as we know in the summer, many more community events that need to be discussed as well. But first, before we turn to that, we have three individuals from the public who are signed up to speak this evening for public comment. The first is Tara Pepperd.
Tara Pepperd, one-two-seven-eight Edwards Avenue, Council President, members of council and citizens of Lakewood. Agreed injustice has occurred in our city, and I will not sit by and idly accept this. This injustice that hurts so many and profits so few. These are very difficult days to be a representative. These are days for all of you to be courageous and stand on the side of truth. Metro presented an offer to run our hospital. Our hospital, the one that touched the lives of so many for over a century. Do you dismiss this fact or do you stand with your constituents outraged that we were lied to? It is absolutely corrupt, and you should not deny this. The white knight was there, but your step-two committee hid it from you and everyone else. Why? Because of greed. A health and wellness center is a drop in the bucket compared to the two-hundred-and-eighty-five million dollar annual impact our inpatient acute care hospital had. Where is the chivalry? Is it not your duty, is it not your privilege to stand for what is truly right for our city? Why did you choose public office? There are ethical and moral standards that you must behold. I do not envy you and your positions. However, you chose public office and you must do your duty with honesty and integrity. As you choose to move forward, I would like to remind you again that an inpatient acute care hospital is best for our city. Thirty-four hundred signatures open the door for you to denounce the master agreement and fight for a more viable option that benefits Lakewood, not the Cleveland Clinic. This is a moral issue. You are jeopardizing the lives of the poor and the underserved. Charity began with our hospital in nineteen oh eight. Care was taken for those indigent and unable to pay for their medical care. You cannot end all of this good. Thirty-four million dollars in the Lakewood Hospital Foundation for our citizens. So I'm going to end with, my pastor father Mark shared a poem during one of his homilies, "The Impossible Dream," from the man of La Mancha. In light of this utter corruption, this really was an inspiration. Please, fight the unbeatable foe, right the unwritable wrong, be willing to march into hell for a heavenly cause. So Don Quixote ends his poem saying, "And I know if I'll only be true to this glorious quest, that my heart will lie peaceful and calm when I'm laid to rest. And the world will be better for this, that one man scorned and covered with scars still strove with his last ounce of courage to reach the unreachable star. Please stand with us, save our hospital, remove the non-compete and perform a genuine RFP. Metro put an offer out. It's our golden, our hospital was the goose that laid the golden eggs. Accepting anything less than this is wrong, and you are our representatives. It's your fiduciary duty. Please, stand with us and save our hospital. Thank you."
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Judy Gillespie.
Did you get the impression I'm not going away? Judy Gillespie, two-three-zero-zero-three, Chandler's Lane. And I many times have stood up here and given you different words for you to focus on and think about as a responsible people that you are, and today, while I was sitting in the chair, what came to me is a powerful thought, balanced behavior. That's impacted me just sitting here, hearing how, what focus, I'm sorry, Sam's not paying attention right now.
You can continue.
Oh, can I? Thank you very much. That the focus that you had at the committee of the hall on the selling prices of the houses apparently was quite a focus. I understand that it was something that you were engaged in. There's ten houses that you were dealing with. Too bad that same focus, that balanced focus couldn't have been on eight-hundred-and-fifty Columbia Road when it was being evaluated for selling price, when you gave it to the Cleveland Clinic for two million less than was even not a fair price. But again, that balanced behavior is what I'm talking about. Here you are, taking time to sell bands to people that are employees only, to make them healthy and wealthy and wise, and yet, when it comes to the master agreement, there is a paragraph in there, and I can't find it because I don't know how to look it up, but there was terminology stating about how the city was going to work on a transportation effort to help residents get back and forth if there's a problem with medical care at Bell and Detroit. Don't hear anything about you guys working on transportation for the people that need it, but I hear you talking about making sure that the fat people that work for the city of Lakewood get these things on their arms. And the only thing I know about those bracelets is, one, I can't afford them, and, two, there's a lot of question as to validity of the response of the data that they get from you, that it's not as accurate, as everybody wants to buy into and believe that it is. So when somebody researches it and says that they have figured out that this is a good choice, I don't know that one person is the only one that can decide whether it is a good choice or a good place to invest that kind of big money. But I do believe that your lack of balanced behavior is really killing Lakewood.
Thanks. Our next speaker is Lesley Bass.
Hello? Can you hear me? Hello, my name is Lesley Bass. I live at one-two-five-zero-six Edgewater Drive, also known as Lake Shore Towers. As you may remember, we had a serious bedbug issue that had to come to the service seriously because we have vulnerable people being victimized. And I wanted to just apprise you of the level of response we have on our HUD, and we have two HUDs. We have the city Lakewood HUD. It's a cab, and national attention, our case is not just about Lake Shore Towers, it's about national changes in policy addressing this issue, and our chairperson is speaking at the National Health Convention in DC this coming week. So thinking about that, you know, I also want to appreciate all the efforts of the city of Lakewood to address this issue, close any gaps in our language, provide some teeth so our venerable people have measures they can take regarding payment as well as treatment. And I'd like to recognize especially our councilperson, Daniel O'Malley, who really jumped on it and really was very aggressive and working for us. And I'd like to thank you for your due diligence on our behalf, and it's ongoing, I know. So I wanted to represent that. Now, my second point is, I would like to support the remarks of Ms. Pepper and the previous speakers concerning Lakewood Hospital. It has been an experience of a corporation swallowing up our local interest for its personal profit. The design of the current medical clinic, this glass structure, is just another emblem of the disregard for the legacy of medicine here at Lakewood. It is just something they can walk away from later when they're tired of doing business here. They, I would like to see that the board of review, architectural review, has a say on this building because right now, it looks like an example of the control that has been on the people's voice, and what happens with the hospital is exemplified by the design of this building. It's just a glass building, it has nothing to do with us. We just, and it seems trivial to talk about the design of a building, but if they truly wanted to be our neighbors, then they would have let the board of review do their job. That's just one example of how insulting this whole process has been. Don't throw away a legacy of medicine that was already here before Cleveland Clinic sniffed around to see how to draw the profits to Avon. You know, that this glass building that they're proposing shouldn't, it'd just be a standing emblem of the process that they had over these last several years. It is, I'm no tiresome to hear the same topic over and over again, but it just hooked me that we have another corporation shoehorning its way into a successful municipality like this. If we don't need our hospital, then what are we going to do at Avon? We don't need Avon's hospital either, then how are they going to make their money? We need our hospital, let's let us stay ours. And that's my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So that concludes public comment for this evening. That was our last signed up speaker. That brings us to announcements. On that actual note there with respect to ABR, I would note that there is a meeting coming up, I believe it's a week from Thursday.
This coming up Thursday.
Yes, I'm sorry, this Thursday. This Thursday, ABR's meeting for a second time on this particular topic to review those plans and go through those plans again in more detail, as more detail has been provided in the interim. So I am one of many citizens that's looking forward to that meeting and having input in the process and interacting with our Citizen Lex Commission that does a fantastic job of wading through the myriad issues that we face here in Lakewood with our various development. I would also like to note that I had the opportunity to go to meet the trucks last Saturday, the eleventh annual. I've been to many of them, and this one, like all the other ones, is no disappointment, with the exception that none of the trucks recognized me from last year. But that aside, it was, it was a great time, and I think the kids had a good time, too. So thanks to all city employees who took time out of their Saturdays and otherwise were available to, to make that event happen. I think it was a rousing success. We had a number of other events in the community and others coming up, too, so I'll share the wealth. Other members of council, announcements?
Mr. Council President.
Yes, Councilman O'Malley.
I just, the only thing standing between us and getting out of here before nine o'clock, but I did want to make a quick update on the situation at Lake Shore Towers, which thank you for reminding me. I received a letter from, in response to the letter that I know I had copied all members of council on back in early April, I received a response from the attorney for the Management Corporation of Lake Shore Towers, sort of responding to some things that I had said and then also making some new assertions, and to say that it was misleading would be putting it charitably. And it was directly in conflict with, first of all, I also want to acknowledge that Senator Sherrod Brown has been active in this as well. Senator Brown is the ranking member on the U.S. Senate Banking Committee. Housing and Urban Development HUD falls within the purview of the Banking Committee. So let's just say HUD takes its phone calls. And so he has been very good and very helpful in communicating with them about the situation at Lake Shore Towers. And HUD conducted a formal review of the bedbug addendum there and found in a very clear six-page response to Shaw Management Corporation that they were in violation of a number of elements of the HUD model lease, HUD policy, state law, local law. And again, I received this very shortly after receiving this letter from the attorney for Shaw Management, who said that they were working wonderfully with HUD and they were totally in compliance, and then here comes this letter from the chief counsel in HUD's Cleveland Field Office, which directly contradicted all of that. So I've had a couple of conversations with Mr. Shaw, who's the owner of this corporation. He asserts this is all a big misunderstanding, but at the same time, won't really talk with me yet, he said, or anyone else here. Legal aid, as I've said before, is representing some residents at. groups. And of course, this all folds into the great work, as Ms. Bass mentioned, that's being done by the city and very thankful for the work being done by the Bedbug Task Force and Health and Human Services Department, the mayor, and Councilman Marx, and many others who are working on this broader issue, but just wanted to give an update on that.
Thank you. I'd also note that Taste of Lakewood was this weekend. Despite the rain, Lakewood is still delicious. And I think that that rounds out announcements unless there's anything else.
I just want to add to that regarding Taste of Lakewood to thank our, our safety forces, the many volunteers, and countless local vendors who stuck it out through several big rainstorms to make it a very, very enjoyable event. I had to enjoy the last hour and a half, which was dry for the most part, and we had our full access to every possible thing because a lot of folks had left and everybody was still there. So, so thank you to all of you for that. I also had to meet a truck or two this weekend. And I think the ARV, ABR, ARV meeting on Thursday, Friday, very, that wasn't much. Thank you.
Thank you for those points. Without any further business before council, move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.